I hereby call the Des Moines City Council regular meeting to order for September 22nd. And with that, I'm going to have Councilmember Harris lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Let the record reflect that all seven members of the council are present. I'm going to break the usual routine here, and I'm going to turn the floor over to the city manager. Michael, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Pleasure this evening. Well attended by law enforcement, which we always appreciate. And I'm going to invite Chief Thomas to come to the podium and conduct a couple of items for us. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. And I've got a couple of presentations that I would like to give this evening. One is a really great celebration, but I'm going to start with the one that's going to get me in trouble first. I do this in a little bit of fear, but I'm going to call up Nadia Curtis.
How are you?
I don't know yet.
So I am giving the chief's award honoring outstanding dedication and service to Nadia. And for those of you that know, Nadia does not like attention. However, she is so involved and so supportive of the police department that we felt that she should be honored. And so I wanted to do that at a council meeting tonight with this award, beautiful award. I don't think they're called plaques anymore, but whatever it's called, we're going to give this to you. But I just want to briefly let you know a few of the things that Nadia does for us. She's on the Police Advisory Committee. She's a very vocal advocate for the police department during public and private events throughout the community. She's our designated community representative for our Valley Independent Investigative Team. She routinely brings all kinds of snacks into the station to take care of our staff. I'm going to get in trouble a little bit from Councilmember Nutting, but probably has the best and most popular national night out event. Councilmember Nutting's is awesome also, but Nadia's is very good. And she participates in ride-alongs with our staff. And so, I really want to thank you for what you do for us as a city and as a police department. Thank you, Nadia.
Thank you.
You probably wouldn't have shown up if we would have said this, right?
You're right. I'll make a quick comment. I could stand here for about three minutes until the red light goes on, but I won't. I will simply say thank you, and I'm honored.
Thank you, Nadia. Okay, first, I'd like to call up John Koppich. John is our traffic officer. And this next recognition award, I want to talk about where we really got assistance in the police department. And I'll tell you, it's such a big deal. We have District Commander Ron Mead from the Washington State Patrol here. He's in charge of the King County and all of the troopers involved in King County that work in King County. And actually, Chief John Batiste of the Washington State Patrol was here. He got an emergency call actually in the parking lot, and he had to leave. A tragic event that he's going to go work on. So he can't be here, but he was going to be here. It's that big of a deal. So now, I would like to call up Kirk Merrill. Kirk, if you would come up here, please. Were you a sergeant or a chief or...
Sergeant.
Sergeant, retired sergeant with the Washington State Patrol. We are extremely, extremely fortunate as a city and as a police department. And I really want to take just a few minutes and honor Kirk this evening for what he did that he didn't have to do, put himself in at risk and at danger. But Officer Koppich was working patrol in Redondo, and he enviewed a domestic violence situation in progress where an intoxicated person threw some rocks at a car and was engaged in a domestic violence situation. Officer Koppich intervened and tried to keep our community safe, which is what we try to do. And the suspect refused to cooperate, and John, Officer John Koppich, and the bad guy were in a fight. And they ended up rolling around on the ground. And John wasn't able to get the suspect into custody up to that point by himself. And Kirk happened to be traveling by, and he saw that a police officer needed assistance. And Kurt retired a few years ago?
Correct.
I couldn't tell. Captain Mead told me he's just maybe freshly retired. But anyway, he stopped, put himself... He kind of told me he was old, but I didn't believe him. Stopped, put himself at risk, and helped John get the suspect safely into custody. And we all know what could happen when we're wrestling around with bad guys and you need help. There were people standing around. There were people, I think, took their cellphone out and were videotaping, but nobody took the time and had the courage to stop and help the officer that really needed help. And I can't tell you how proud I am of you and what you did, how much our city appreciates what you did. John wanted to come up and give a big, long public speaking, and I asked him not to, so John's not going to do that tonight. But so Kurt, on behalf of the city of Des Moines, all of our officers and our department, I want to sincerely thank you for the assistance that you provided. Please accept this meritorious conduct award as a token of our appreciation in recognition of your bravery and selflessness.
On behalf of the council and our residents in the city and our staff, we just want to present you with the city pin. It's a small token, but we really appreciate what you did. You answered the call, and we greatly appreciate it as a community.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I want to thank Kurt. Oh, Kurt, I have this letter for you, too.
I'm like Nadia. I'm kind of beige, and I don't like all this attention.
So we have to thank Assistant Chief Kui. I think he might have had to do a little arm twisting. I think Kirk didn't want the attention or recognition either. And thank you for being here this evening and allowing us to honor you. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief. And thank you, everybody, for being here, law enforcement. Thank you all. Really appreciate it. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Michael. Is there any correspondence?
Yes, Mayor. We received an email from the friends at Saltwater Park. They deeply appreciate the funds that we gave them to help them develop and publish their website. And that concludes correspondence.
All right. Now will be time for public comments. I would like to just remind those participants that any person making personal impertinent or slanderous remarks or who become boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the council will be removed from the meeting. You'll have three minutes to speak. We'll start with, I think it's Muriel Wallstrom. Did I have that correct? Okay. Ma'am, go ahead to the podium right there.
I'm speaking in behalf of our son and daughter-in-law, whom we live with. And my son wrote this, so I'm going to read it. Dear City Council and honored guests, my name is Muriel Wallstrom, and I am here with my husband, Marlon. And we live at 26485 Marine View Drive South on the corner of Marine View Drive South and Woodmont South. And he put AKA Dead Man's Curve. We are lifelong, only 53 years, residents of Des Moines. And two years ago, we relocated to the Woodmont area along with my son Dan and his wife Heidi. Since November 2020, we have experienced six accidents at this corner, two of which ended up with vehicles in our driveway. The most recent was midnight on Labor Day this year. We were awakened to a car that crashed into the back of my son's pickup truck, the result of the driver failing to negotiate the right turn and ended up in our front yard. And by the way, he was in the driveway, so there was no excuse. Last summer, the city installed reflective delineators in the road, and this has helped reduce the speed of the drivers. While this has most definitely lowered the probability of vehicles leaving the roadway, from recent experience has not eliminated it. This corner is frequented by residents walking, getting their mail, and working in their yard. The last thing we need is for a resident or driver to be seriously injured or killed. I represent the 160 homes in the Woodmont Country Club in appealing to you for action. We are requesting either a roundabout or other physical barrier which will substantially reduce the probability of vehicles leaving the roadway. Reference similar project at the bottom of 272nd heading to Redondo. The community is asking for a longtime solution and capital improvement, and that this project be funded in 2023. Thank you for your time and consideration. Respectfully, Muriel Wallstrom. The people at the bottom is a committee. Dan and Heidi Wallstrom, Marlon and Muriel Wallstrom, Dave and Kendra Rosen, Jim and Amy Kahn, Joe Spauling, Michelle Rouse, Sharon Moorhead, and Jim Stender. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Wallstrom.
We did put little things that go in the road that if you hit them, they go up and down. But it's happened since that, so we would like a little bit more. Okay?
Thank you very much. All right, moving on. Mr. Bob Leonard.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name's Bob Leonard. I represent Marina Place HOA at 506 South 222nd Street. We're just east of the new Soundview Park. The park is a great addition to the city of Des Moines. It's used by many people on a daily basis. Great place to watch the sunset, to walk your dog, or to just visit with your friends. The park is open from dawn until dusk. Our problem is that the handicap parking spots on the 5th Avenue extension are being used after dark for many activities that are not good for our neighborhood. We have experienced multiple visits nightly from drug dealers, Pacific Highway ladies of the evening, and people enjoying the evening with their boomboxes or with loud music. We have been instructed to call 911 when there is a problem, and the police have responded to our calls. This gets a little old, though, at 2:00 in the morning when we have to get up and call the police. And they have more important things to do than to be chasing ne'er-do-wells out of our parking lot down there. We have installed cameras to monitor the situation, and it has helped some. The city also just recently installed two cameras, and I'm sure that will help. The best solution would be for us is to install a gate on the 5th Avenue stub entrance that could be closed during the nighttime hours. I have contacted all the parties involved who have access to 5th Avenue, and they are Patrice Dorel, Victor and Larissa Kobzar, and our Marina Place condos. And all have agreed that the best solution would be a gate. We live in a society where people do not follow the rules, and this would be at least prevent people from driving to the handicap spaces during the night. The park also needs more lighting in that area, especially on the north side. The police department has emphasized the need for the lighting. And we'd like to thank you for your consideration on this. We just don't want to become ground zero for those type of activities in our small neighborhood there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Moving on to Mr. David Emery.
Hello, all. So again, my name's David Emery. I've been a resident of Des Moines for nearly eight years. As the council is pretty aware, many of the residents in my neighborhood, the Redondo neighborhood, have been expressing concern about public safety and quality of life issues in and around the Redondo boat launch area. However, I'd like to say many of us are very glad to see an increased presence of the Des Moines Police Department recently down there, and especially the series of what the police call special details at the end of August and early September. And I'd like to highlight some useful insights from those efforts. First, I wanted to highlight these special details resulted in 45 citations over a combined nine hours of enforcement. That's five citations an hour. This is a huge number of citations by any standard. And I think this serves as a hallmark statistic demonstrating just how bad the problem is down in that area. Second, even though these special details were focused on enforcement of vehicle noise laws, it's worth noting that there were six citations written for excess of speed in this highly congested area. Six citations were written for unlicensed drivers with these loud mufflers, and three citations were written for open use of drugs. In short, this experience helps demonstrate that the bad actors with these loud vehicles are also frequently engaged in activities that represent a risk to public safety. Third, I'd like to point out just how effective these efforts were. The first special detail averaged seven citations per hour, while the second of these details, which was conducted six days later, only averaged about three citations an hour. In short, it appears the word got around that Redondo was no longer a free-for-all, and a significant number of these bad actors decided to simply stay home. Also, these efforts took six unlicensed drivers off the roads and finally cracked down on some 27 drivers with illegally modified exhausts. Putting them on notice, there is a cost to breaking the exhaust noise laws. I'd like to end with extending a heartfelt thank you to the police department for this outstanding and very effective efforts with these recent special details in the Redondo neighborhood. Also, now that we know how incredibly effective these can be, I'd like to encourage the city to start making more use of this very useful tool. And as a plug for Redondo, especially next spring in the Redondo neighborhood before the seasonal craziness gets out of hand once again, thank you for your continued attention to the problems down there.
Thank you, Mr. Emery. Moving on to Ms. Greta Devon or Devan? That's close.
Very close. Thank you. I want to start out by thanking you for the opportunity to talk about landmark on the sound once again. It first came to my attention when I was driving down Marine View Drive, and I saw this. I have to call it majestic building sitting on the side of a hill. I pulled over and admired it. And a few weeks later, I went up there to the building, and one of the last masons living there invited me in and gave me an incredibly incredible tour. We walked the grounds, and then we sat on the steps and looked at a sunset. It was magical. And that was the extent of my experience with that place until many years later, when I found out that it will probably be torn down. I come from a place where historic buildings are really important. I grew up in the ruins of World War II. And my hometown, I'm not going to give you a great lengthy description of it, but it was 70% to 80% destroyed. And very quickly, as soon as there was any money, it was rebuilt. And the historic buildings were rebuilt in their old beauty. And I think that I grew up with that, and it was always talked about. And I think that made it important for me to think about historic buildings. And I looked into it a little bit, and I think this is the only one of any sites that we actually have. And I don't understand... I understand the economics of it, but I don't understand that it should go away. And I think if we get enough people involved and do it loudly and continuously, maybe this can be saved. Thank you.
Ms. Devon, just for the record, the city you live in? If you could just say it into the mic there?
Oh, Des Moines.
Des Moines, okay. Thank you. All right, moving on to Ms. Stephanie Salaska. Did I get close? Wow. I'm like one and a half or two.
Hi there. I'm Stephanie Salaska from Des Moines. And you know, I go past a warehouse all the time. And lately, they have cut down acres of trees. I mean acres. It's just, I used to walk my dogs there, and they're just, it's gone. And now warehouses are going up. And so I just have one sentence to say. I don't understand how you can demolish what is not only considered a landmark, it's named that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salaska. For the record, you're from Des Moines as well. Okay. And that concludes our public speaking. All right, moving back to the city manager's report. Michael, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one more item, and I'm going to ask Jeff Friend, our Deputy Director of Finance, is going to provide a second quarter financial report in response to council request at the budget retreat, and getting back to normal with COVID somewhat, and also with the new financial management system that we've implemented. Jeff, thank you.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. Jeff Friend, Deputy Finance Director, with the second quarter general fund finance report. So I hope you like charts, because we're going to see a few. So we're going to begin with just a brief overview of the revenues and expenditures for the general fund. And then we're going to look at a few revenue categories in more detail, and then finish up with a look at the fund balance. So this slide, this chart, each column is the budget for revenue and expenditures, with revenue on the right and on the left. I didn't major in right and left. Revenue on the left and expenditures on the right. So the bold numbers on top, that's the total budget for revenue and the total budget for expenditures. The blue sections on the bottom are the actuals. And so through June 30th, the revenue was almost $11 million, whereas on the expenditure side, it was just over $11 million. So you can see that they were very close to even, in fact, just about $47,000 apart, with expenditures exceeding revenues by about $47,000. The yellow sections are just what's remaining in the annual budget. So you can see on the revenue, like I mentioned, we've collected nearly $11, and we still have 13 and 1/2 more to collect. On the expenditure side, similar story, because the number's almost the same. We've spent a little over $11 million, and we still have room in the budget for 13.8 more. Next slide. This is similar to the chart in the first quarter report. So this is our top revenue categories. And with operating expenses, the green bar on the bottom, the 50% represents basically June 30th is halfway through the year. So if you're looking at the annual budget, this shows where those categories land. And as you can see, property taxes, utility taxes, sales tax, franchise fees are all outperforming our budgeted expectations through June 30th. BNO taxes is right there. Red light running is coming up a bit short, but operating expenses is also short of the 50% of the budget. Next slide. So now we're going to take a look at different revenue categories and their trends. So this charges for property tax, and each bar is grouped by quarter. So you can see quarter one, quarter two, three, and four. The green bars are 2022. Orange in the middle is 2021, and blue on the left is 2020. And so the value, I like sharing this chart, because you can see when I come and talk about the first quarter and say, property tax is coming, I swear, that it does come in the second and fourth quarters. And also, property tax is a relatively stable income source, and it's nice to have that as your top revenue source, because we levy the tax, we collect it. And so there's not much volatility there. Next slide.
If I may, one thing about this slide that's interesting, if you could back up to the property taxes, for the past two years, the city has not collected the 1% increase that the city is entitled to. And what you see in that slide, quarter two, which reflects the collection of the property tax in May, I believe, is when it comes through, is an increase. And the increase is reflective of an overall increase in the value of property tax, but not a specific increase in individual property tax. So I think that's a good sign for the city relative to growth and coming back from COVID. Thanks, Jeff. Just wanted to point that out. Thanks, Jeff, just wanted to point that out.
Here we see the chart, same chart, but for utility taxes. You can see the utility taxes, they totaled about $2.3 million. Most of that came into the first quarter, but you can see each quarter for 2022 is up. That's largely due to recology's rates increase, so solid waste, utility tax was up, but also electricity and natural gas was also up, most likely due to a rate adjustment by Puget Sound Energy. So that's, those are outperforming budget. Next slide. Sales tax. So the city collected about $1.8 million in sales tax through June 30th. That's up about $190,000 from the previous year, which is about almost 12%. This is a function probably mostly of inflation, but the good news is that people are spending, so people are spending, causing inflation, but things are on the upswing in sales tax. And more specifically, if you can go to the next slide, we have sales tax by category. So these are different categories that we get on a sales tax report from the state when we receive sales tax. Each category, the category at the top on down is by their contribution to our, our sales tax revenue. And you can see the change in dollars is in the fourth column, and then the percentage changed. So you can see everything is trending upwards, with retail up 5.5%, services up 6.2. The only two categories that went down are automotive and manufacturing. As you can see, combined over six months, that's less than $10,000. So everything else being up, that's about, you know, the police get a lot of feel-good presentations, but for me in finance, this is probably as good as it's going to get. So things are, things are trending in the right way, it's because of sales tax. Next slide, please. BNO tax, BNO tax is also up about $83,000 over the same period in the prior year. You might notice in the first quarter for 2020, it's really high, and then it kind of drops. The change from year to year is because the annual filing deadline was pushed back to April 15th, and so that kind of flattened things out in 2021 and 2022. Okay, next slide. Franchise fees. Franchise fees are up, they're up about $68,000 over the prior period, and that is a 35.6% increase. And of all my slides, I thought this was going to be the least interesting, however, it actually became interesting to me, because that's such a big jump. You notice in the first quarter, that's a big jump from 2021 to 2022. One of the franchise fees we get is an admin fee from recology, and in 2021, there was a snow event, so their cash receipts were down for about two months. And then, as I mentioned in the prior slide about utility taxes, there's a rate adjustment adjusted for inflation. So then you have in 2022, you have an increase, an increase for inflation, plus you get, we didn't have a snow event, so it jumps up quite a bit. Next slide. Red light running. Red light running is one category that is down, is down $90,000 from the same point last year, which is about 14 and a half percent. It could be due to improved behavior. You can see also that if you look at 2021, third quarter tends to be strong, so I do expect to have it go up in the third quarter, but I think we'll probably be playing catch-up on this one for the year, because we're down 90,000. But if public safety is up, then that's, you know, the point of that. Next slide. So fund balance overall, as we talked about last time, December 31st, it was just over $7.1 million. So it's June 30th, it is down slightly from that number at 7.116, but it is up from the first quarter by almost $300,000. So things are moving up on the fund balance from quarter to quarter. And that is the end of my presentation, if you have any questions.
All right. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, sir. I just have two quick things. So are the franchise fees, are they, maybe I got this wrong, but are you implying they are based on like a cash basis? In other words, like as the receipts come in?
Well, for recology and their admin fee, it was.
Okay.
There was a cash income, and they pay a percentage.
So basically, if like people are behind, and then they, you know, pay up like after they go back to work or something, that's going to create a...
Yeah, I'm not sure of those details. I'm just more certain of what we receive.
Okay. Yeah. The other thing is, and again, maybe I've been, where does like leasehold excise tax fit onto the budget? Is it part of the general fund or go somewhere?
Yes, but it's not one of the top revenue categories that would be as, like, for instance, sales tax, it's a lower number, so I wasn't focused on the slide.
Okay. Do you have like just a vague...
I can check. I don't know it off the top of my head.
If you wouldn't mind, thank you. That's it.
If I'm, if I may, the leasehold tax will show us what?
Just, I just wanted to know what it was, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really quick, so I have a question. So the sales and use tax, obviously inflation, most of the second quarter was starting to see signs of it. Is it one of the things in, in like brick and mortar and online is there's been a, the laws changed for some of the sales tax to go to the destination zip code? Is that possibly part of the reason why we're seeing increases as well?
Yeah, I think that was one reason why, I think during the pandemic, it didn't drop as far as it did, because there was internet sales, and it is, as you said, destination. But I think overall, there's a lot of different categories, like manufacturing wouldn't necessarily be internet sales, but it would fall into retail, and retail being up could be partly internet as well, yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Pennington.
Thank you for the report. Going back in history a little bit, when we were specifically about the, the franchise agreements, and those were a pretty contentious time when we were trying to negotiate those, and I think that, you know, looking at the numbers, and, and I think, you know, that speaks to the wisdom of, of going through those contentious times to get where we're at today, especially since, you know, the city has not, you know, opted to, to take the 1% for the last two years. That pretty, that speaks pretty highly of, of the thought and, and the planning and the foresight to, to see where we're at, to get us to where we are today. So thank you to the city staff and all that was involved with that. The, the red light cameras, while it may seem that it's a bad thing that revenues are down, because we made the news on, on the corner up there at KDM and the highway about, but, you know, it, it is, you know, demonstrated change behavior. But then also, as you're looking towards, towards in the different quarters, remember during COVID, you could drive to Seattle in about 10 minutes at one point. So there's not a lot of traffic on the road. I think that probably accounts for quite a bit of the, the downward trend in the, in the revenue during those periods, just, just an observation. So thank you.
I, I know I was more careful after I got my first one.
And councilmember, you know, since you brought it up, I think it's really significant to remember that six or seven years ago, when we were facing bankruptcy, our fund balance was less than $600,000. Now, having gone through COVID and, and maintained in place the discipline and structure that we've, we've done, it's $7 million, which will protect us from any future events, including the inflationary events we're experiencing. So appreciate you mentioning that, and it's, that's one of the best stories about the city, is how strong we are with our fund balance for the future. And Jeff, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Friend.
Mayor, that concludes our city manager report.
All right. Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, acceptance of claims for damages, acceptance agents. Item three, domestic violence awareness month proclamation. Item four, Ezra Nehemiah Taylor proclamation. Item five, fieldhouse tower lease agreement with Dish Wireless. And item six, 2022 citywide pavement repair project, public works construction contract award, and that concludes the consent calendar. Mayor?
Thank you, Bonnie. Do I have a motion? I have a motion from... So moved. Okay, I have a motion from councilmember Nutting to approve the consent agenda as is. Do I have a second? Councilmember Pennington? Does anyone wish to pull an item? Seeing none? I'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a seven zero, as consent agenda should be, so that is approved. With that, I will read the proclamations. So the first, the first proclamation I have is for domestic violence awareness month. And before I get started, one of the things I just wanted to compliment is our deputy mayor, Buckston. Deputy Mayor Buckston has been a champion in domestic violence in the community. She supports all the events, and I just want to acknowledge, I don't typically do that, but your strong work there is one of the reasons why we're acknowledging this today. Whereas, every one of our residents deserves to live a life free from violence and abuse. And whereas, anyone can be a victim of domestic violence regardless of age, sex, ability, ethnicity, sexual orientation, social economic status, or religion. And whereas, children that grow up in a violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average. And whereas, domestic violence awareness provide, provides an excellent opportunity for our community to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for numerous organizations and individuals providing critical advocacy, service, and assistance to its victims. Now therefore, this Des Moines City Council wishes to recognize October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and encourages the community to ensure that victims of domestic violence know they are not alone and are here, and we are here to support survivors of domestic violence as they courageously move forward to enjoy a full and healthy life. Signed this day by the mayor. Thank you. All right, we're going to change it up just a second, just a little bit here. Selena, could I have the Taylor family come on up here with us? First of all, if you don't mind taking a moment, just introduce who's with you.
This is my mother, Betty Taylor, and this is my nine-year-old young grandfather, Charles Taylor, and that's her dad.
Thank you, you saved the moment there.
Right.
All right. So I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas, National Gun Violence Awareness Day is, is to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence. And whereas, it declares that a country, we must do more to reduce gun violence. And whereas, Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other developed countries. And whereas, support of the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from dangerous people. And whereas, in September 2021, Ezra Nehemiah Taylor was tragically shot and killed, leaving family and friends in Des Moines and South King County in grief. And whereas, the city honors Ezra and Americans who live, whose lives are cut short, the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, as well as the families and friends who have lost their loved ones. And whereas, we renew our commitment to reduce our gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands, and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our residents safe. Now therefore, the, the Des Moines City Council hereby proclaims September 26th to be in honor of Ezra Nehemiah Taylor, and to emphasize national gun violence awareness in the city of Des Moines, and encourage all citizens to support their communities, local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence, and to honor and value human lives in the city of Des Moines, Washington. Signed this day, myself. And I'm going to present this to you, right? I got a few words, and then I want to open it up to you, too. One of the things that I, I can't imagine, as we were talking earlier, of the loss and grief that you guys have experienced. I mean, I'm not even going to pretend to try, because I can't. But one of the things that I recognize is, in that dire needs, I could understand how people could feel victimized, they could feel sorrowful, they could feel anger and all these things, and I'm sure you had those emotions. But one thing I want to talk about this family is, they, the way they reacted to this tragedy is they've been advocates to make change, reduce violence in our community, and they're making a difference. On Monday, September 26th, at Midway Park, we're going to have an event. It'll start at 3:00 and go at 9:00, but words will be said about 6:00 o'clock. And I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, on behalf of the council, our staff, our police force, and the community, thank you for the way you've addressed it. It is making a difference, and we appreciate it. And I think you are an example in the community of how to turn tragedy into something positive and good for the whole community as a whole. And so with that, I wholeheartedly say thank you, and I'm going to put pins on these guys while you say a few words, okay?
Appreciate you, thank you so much. Thank you so much for the city of Des Moines. You guys have been so amazing to me and my family. September 26th last year was a very devastating time for me and my family. And after that, couple of months down the road, because of Ezra Nehemiah was community. He loved community, and our family loves community. And the response and the reaction that we have done is change community for the better. And we actually, in honor of Ezra Nehemiah, we have Ezra's Hands Outreach, where we go in the schools and we provide services for the children and the family. Ezra had a clothing line. His clothing line is Keep It Easy. He wanted everyone to tip, everyone to know, to keep it easy. Everything that you say, keep it easy. Everything that you do, keep it easy. City council, keep it easy. And, and with that, many lives have changed for the better. And on September 26th, like the mayor had said, we're gathering around community. Across the street from Midway Park is a community. We are adopting that community to make changes for them, providing resources for them. We are going to make this day a great day of excellence, community relationship building, and that's what our family is all about. I don't know anything else but to love, and but to just spread more love like Ezra would have. And so I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Our family thanks you from the bottom of my heart with this proclamation. And as I'm talking about Ezra, it's bittersweet, but just know that we are making a change for the better, and I appreciate the city of Des Moines for just writing and dying. I appreciate you guys. Michael and Bonnie, where she at? There she is. And so, but I, I really appreciate the police department and the mayor and his wife and just everyone, just rallying together to just support the, the movement. And last thing I want to say is, when I found out that my son was at the medical examiner's place, I told the detective, the first words I said, I said, "Movement." Who says movement? And I know this is the movement, and I appreciate everyone's support with my family and with the community, and we are making changes every single day, and I appreciate you guys so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and we'll see you Monday. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right, moving on to new business. Michael, you and your staff have the floor.
I'm willing to give it up. So ask Beth Ann, our finance director, to present the capital improvement plan.
Good evening, mayor and council. Sorry, I need to take a moment. I appreciate you sharing. I really wish I had met him and really appreciate what you're doing, your family's doing. Okay, so I like her saying, "Let's keep this easy." So tonight before you, you have the 2023-2028 Capital Improvement Plan summary. First, I'd like to acknowledge my staff member, Eric Mandelis, for putting the plan together and working with all the program managers. They've done a lot of hard work out in the departments, working with Eric and pulling the information together. Normally, this plan comes before the committees earlier in the summer. We had a delay because we put the financial management system in place starting January 1st. So we had to close out and reconcile the old system. And Eric has done a really incredible job getting the new project accounting system up and running, working with the departments to do the reconciliation, you know, figure out what projects need to roll over, the new projects and everything. So that is one of the reasons why we didn't meet the committee's schedule. So if you can go to the next slide. The plan overview, and this is in a thousand dollars. We have a very dynamic capital improvement plan. We have a total of 88 projects, and there are 79 active projects, over 141 million. We're closing nine projects that will wrap up just a little under 11 million. So our total capital budget for 2023 through 2028 is $151.9 million. So for a city our size, we have a lot of things going, and we have a very dynamic and diverse list of projects. So the next slide. Of our active projects by category, you can see that our top category is our transportation projects. Then we have municipal capital improvements, marina capital improvements, surface water, and then building facilities. As you know, we're wrapping up the North Bulkhead project. And that would be under municipal capital improvements. And then in 2023 through 2028, the marina is looking at doing dock replacements. So that's why the amount of 14.1 million is there. So our next slide. Plan project by costs, or costs by year. So this splits it out to show how much we're spending per year. That adds up to the 151 million. So in 2022, we're a little under 15 million. Now 2023, it looks like we're going to go up to 28 million. And I believe it's, if you look at the trend, in the even years, it's less, and then the odd years, it's higher. And I believe a lot of that is we have design for those projects, and then we have funding. And that's kind of where some of that happens over the, for 2022 through 2025. Next slide. Our funding overview. One of our priorities in putting the capital improvement plan together is, as everybody on council knows, we want to use other people's money. And so, and our staff is really good at getting grant funding. So we use our city funds as match. And the city's history has been to pretty much not do a project until it was 100% funded. And probably recently, other than in 2018, when we refunded bonds and we issued the new money bonds for the North Bulkhead, we haven't done debt. But we have programmed in some debt for the marina and the dock replacement. And then potentially, we may be looking at debt in other places as we move forward. But those are placeholders. But that shows you, we use our franchise fees. REIT 1 and 2 is a big source of funding for us. And luckily, we have a park levy from King County. And the one-time tax that in the general fund, if a project is over $15 million and we receive sales tax on that and BNO tax, we move that to that fund and it's spent for capital. And then, as you can see below, in the two big categories, we've secured almost 25 million in grants. And we're pursuing unsecured grants of 46.6 million. So, next slide. One of the things is that we had committee members from Redondo come and ask about putting some money towards the Redondo area in 2023. So we thought it would be good to do a recap of what we've completed in capital investment in projects down in Redondo. And so this is a list of them. And what we've done in the past up through 2022 is we've invested 5.5 million in that area. I know in 2014 and 2015, Redondo Parking Management Plan, there is a master plan for strategic programmatic and implemental solutions. I know that that is one area that's been asked to be looked at. I believe that if you go to the next slide, our current and future capital investment for Redondo is for 9.4, or close to 9.5 million. We have the 2023-2024 Redondo Paid Parking. But part of that is a feasibility study to look at that topic and see what would be feasible now, not something from 2014.
And Beth Ann, I just want to mention and appreciate that on the previous slide, the primary capital improvement was the boardwalk. And that was about 4.5 million, I believe. And probably over 4 million of that came from other sources rather than the city. And then on the next slide, going forward, we really have our delegations from the 33rd and the 30th districts, the state legislature, for support for capital projects for Redondo. And they provided an amount of money that going forward will be able to utilize. So we really appreciate kind of the team effort with our legislative delegation to acquire these resources.
Thank you, Michael. In the capital improvement plan, what we have in 2023 will be what I put into the 2023 operating budget that we bring to you in October, the 1st of October. This plan is balanced, and if there are any changes through the hearings and whatnot, we can make adjustments. But it is balanced at this point. If we go to the next slide, we have our suggested motion for tonight. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Councilmember Nutting?
I move to adopt draft resolution number 22-052, approving the city of Des Moines 2023-2028 Capital Improvement Plan.
Deputy Mayor Buxton?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion and questions. Councilmember Harris, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Just two quick, hopefully quickies. Does the one-time money, does that take into account withdrawals for like the ferry? And for, there was talk about perhaps salaries or like ARPA money, or is that something else?
The one-time sales tax that was put towards the ferry pilot project has been accounted for in there. The ARPA money is not, I believe we have it designated in the project that it goes to.
That's a separate account from this?
Yes, that is a separate account from the one-time capital money.
Thank you. The other thing is, when you say 350 K allocated for the Redondo parking, is that kind of a hard number? Does that imply that there's like a system that's been, you know?
No, no, that's just, that's money that's been assigned to it. No decision has been made, and that's part of that discussion in figuring out what's the best thing to do down there. I believe, when I talked to the public works director, his priorities for Redondo is the fishing pier and the restroom right now. And that's, as much as I'm going to talk for him, since he's not here tonight.
No, no, please. When I see a number, I just wonder, you know, is the place older, or is there something?
Not that I know of.
Thank you very much. That's it.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yeah, so a question on, I know it probably doesn't go into here. But so in case somebody's out there wondering, we had the conversation this evening or the comments about 272nd and Marineview Drive. And where would the monies, would that go into the budget that we're going to put together? Or would that be something in terms of a traffic safety study for that corner that folks have been talking about?
So I think, councilmember, there's two points to what you're saying. First of all, it's really important to remember that both the CIP and the budget are snapshots in time. And so what we would want to do is assess exactly what could be done there through traffic safety and what's appropriate. If that involves a capital improvement plan, and depending on the urgency, which is revealed in the traffic study, we could come back to council, amend the CIP, and put it at a higher priority if that was what was, you know, kind of indicated.
Perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinmetz?
Councilmember Pennington stole my thunder there, but I do have sort of a follow-up, which is, I mean, there are all kinds of places in the city that people would like some, would like to know what the city is going to do to improve their roads and capital improvements throughout. Where can they look up what is in the capital improvement plan?
The capital improvement plan was part of the agenda packet tonight. And if it's approved, we'll definitely post it on the website. So, and if anybody wants to email myself or Bonnie, we can get them a copy of it. Or if they have a specific question about a project, we can give them that sheet of paper.
That hasn't been available before this packet was published last Friday, correct?
No, it was not available.
The previous years, it has. Yeah, this year, until we approve it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
This is just rhetorically, on the consent agenda, it would have been, you know, we have the pothole kind of thing, which is like something that the public asks about all the time, and this is not it. I kind of wish that it would have been unfair to pull that item, but because, you know, engineering isn't here. But that would be a, that's just such a popular topic that it would be good to talk about. I think people conflate this with that other road improvement stuff. And so, not really a question, but thank you.
I'd like to respond to that, though. It's a great point, I think. Councilmember Pennington was indicating this earlier. There was a long period of time where there was no pavement replacement. It was only after we ridged the ship relative to the budget that we were able to put a million dollars into that annually for most of the past number of years, five or six years. So that's a triumph for the council, for the city, and for the community.
I'm going to add, you know, obviously, over the last several years, becoming fairly intimate with the capital improvements plan, one of the things that the public should know is how comprehensive it is over across all our city on various projects that need to be done. And they range just from A to Z. It's an amazing intricate summary of everything we're doing. One thing I can say for our staff is, get ready for a ride. Because I looked at what you're going to do between 2023 and 2025, Redondo being one of those. And by the way, thank you for putting that in the presentation as I'd requested. I appreciate that. I think that was enlightening for our Redondo residents as well. But you guys are in for a ride, and I'm just going to say, let us know what we need to support you, because there's a lot to get done. And I think our residents are going to notice it, and they're going to appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion on the table. Seeing no more comments or questions, all those in favor of the motion to adopt the draft resolution for the capital improvement plan, please raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero. All right. So we're going to come to the introduction of items for future consideration. This time is for the sole purpose of proposing new business items that have not previously been before the council for discussion on a future agenda. This is not a time for questions about old business. Councilmembers can submit questions or seek updates on previously discussed business to the city manager at any time. Do any councilmembers have new business they would like to propose? Councilmember Nutting?
Yeah, at the last regular council meeting, I had made, I'm sorry, I'm looking for my notes here. I had made a motion to bring a what is it called? Resolution, thank you. Made a motion to bring a resolution in front of council, for the entire council, to get behind the endorsement of the Highline School District's bond measure that'll be on the November's ballot. After some conversation, I think that it'd be best if I rescind that motion and that my fellow councilmembers endorse the bond measure individually. I've already endorsed it, and I encourage my colleagues to do the same. But I would like to rescind my motion to have a resolution brought in front of us.
Do I have two others to support that? Okay, got enough? So it is rescinded.
Well, let's.
Or do we have some other action?
Yeah, we made a motion to put it on. So I think if we could have a motion to remove it from the future agenda.
Okay, so do I have a motion to remove it from a future agenda?
That councilmember Nutting made that motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I made that motion.
Okay, and I have seconded by councilmember Steinmetz. All those in favor? Motion passes seven zero. Any other new items? Seeing none, we will move to board and committee reports. And with that, I turn over the floor to councilmember Harris.
Thank you, mayor. I would like to invite the Taylor family tomorrow night at Midway Park. Reach Out Des Moines is going to have a listening session. It's members of the Pacific Middle School staff and community, library, and so on. And the program's been remarkably effective in reducing teen violence since 2015. It's really a success story for the neighborhood. And I hope that you can work together on that. It's prevention, which is, seems to be something that will work in tandem with what you're trying to do, and I could not be more supportive of that. And I would just say that I would encourage the, apparently, a lot of people watch Channel 21, and the committee meetings are not on Channel 21. I would encourage the public to watch today's meetings of both economic development and municipal facilities. There was really a good discussion of the marina and future plans, ferry, quarter deck, and so on. And this really matters a great deal. And I think that's it.
Thank you, councilmember Harris. Moving on to councilmember Pennington.
I don't have any yearly reports. I attended the economic development, um, meeting this evening. Again, it was a, one that is a really good one to watch. Attended a few events around the city. This, uh, for those of you that are Mount Rainier alumni, their, um, homecoming is this Friday. Football games Friday evening up at Highline Stadium, so go Rams.
Thank you, Council, Councilmember Pennington. Moving on to Councilmember Steinmetz.
Okay, um, I, I have attended the farmer's market the last couple of Saturdays. It's still getting quite a bit of business. I, I mean, I'm really, there's no sort of tailing off at the end of the year, except that there's not quite the same selection of fruit. So that's, uh, the one thing that I've noticed. But the, uh, after last Saturday's farmer market, I went to the Zenith Neighborhood, uh, picnic, which was great, got to meet a lot of people. We had some very good discussions about, um, the landmark on the sound, uh, the Old Masonic Home. And I think, um, really sort of help people understand what the city council's role is in that. I also attended the public safety meeting a couple of weeks ago. And then the municipal facilities meeting tonight. Uh, I agree that, uh, there were some very good discussions going on, um, at the municipal facilities meeting, including a good explanation of the lease for the quarter deck and how those numbers were arrived at. And I think that's something people need to understand. So, uh, it was a very good and very eye-opening discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Steinmetz. Moving on to Councilmember Oxger.
Thank you. And I, I'd just like to add on to Harry's comment that this is the last weekend of the farmer's market. So, um, it's your last chance, folks. It's, it's been a good season and, and, uh, that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Oxger. Moving on to Councilmember Nutting.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to be brief. We had two, um, committee meetings tonight that I chaired, uh, the first being economic development. We received, uh, Marina redevelopment update, um, from the mayor about the, I'm sorry, from the city manager about the fast ferry. And, uh, um, there's been a lot of restaurants and, and other, uh, businesses in town that have seen an uptick in revenue and business and in their downtimes, which is usually between two and five. They have seen an increased amount of traffic and that's due to the, um, fast, the, the ferry service. And, um, we'll get a, a revenue update in October, but it's looking like it's been about $10,000 a week in revenue, um, that the ferries brought in. So it's definitely, it's definitely working out for us. We reserved, uh, received a update on the he- housing action plan. And there's, um, uh, there's two parts to that. First off, there's going to be a, um, uh, open house up at the Activity Center on October 21st from 1:30 to 3:30. Um, from, oh, wait, hold on. No, I'm sorry. Back that up. That's the, something else. On Tuesday, um, next week, what is that? The 26th? 27th. Tuesday, the 27th, um, from 5:00 PM, um, to 7:00 PM at the Activity Center is going to be an open house about the Marina redevelopment. And from 5:00 to 6:00 is the open house, um, state of the city from the mayor. And then, um, uh, at 6 o'clock, there'll be the state of the city from the mayor and some presentations afterwards. And then the housing action plan, there's two parts to it. There's going to be a lot of community involvement. And then the, um, we were briefed on the comprehensive plan. Again, a lot of community involvement and we received a grant to do the work on that plan. And then the PSRC Transit Oriented Development Webinar Walk, Walking Tour. And that's going to happen October 21st, um, from 1:30 to 3:30. And it's going to be virtual. Anybody can join, you just have to register for it. Um, and then in the municipal facilities, uh, received an update on the lease extension and agreement with, um, the quarter deck. Again, if you get a chance to watch the, um, repeat of that, there was some really good conversation and some explanations there. Lastly, let me find my notes. Yes, tomorrow's night's game is, um, with Auburn and it is the homecoming game. It starts at 7:00 at Highline Stadium and the, the Rams are currently 3-0. So they're hot this year. And, uh, I can't think of anything else, so that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Councilmember Nutting. Moving on to council, or Deputy Mayor Buxton?
Thank you, Mayor. Since we last met, our last business meeting, I've had about 36 engagements with staff, public businesses and my colleagues advocating for the city, talking about just about every arena, advocating in every arena possible and enjoying my community in the meantime. It's been a very fun few weeks. I did want to ask, uh, add that at the farmer's market, it being the last one, they are having a harvest festival down there. There will be people dressed in, you know, farming-like attire. The neighborhood cheese leader, lady is actually bringing her cow down there. So you can say hi to, and I can't remember if it's Mabel or whatever the cow's name is, but, and they're, they're, um, if you buy apples, you can get the apples squished up in the cider press and, and they're having a pie contest. I mean, lots of fun things down there for kids and families. So if you had any, any questions about any of the, any of these topics, feel free to give me a call or I would love to have coffee with anybody. I'm very available. I did want to take a couple of minutes now to clarify something. Uh, Facebook, uh, a colleague posted something out on Facebook this week and it was a little distressing to me. So kind of an encouragement to come down to City Hall with flaming pitchfork, pitchforks to complain to City Council about the safety of public transit. And, um, you know, that neither ST3 or Metro, just for public information, they're two separate agencies and they're not the wheelhouse of our city council. They each have their own police teams, which are units of King County Sheriff's Office. And, um, they are governed by either the, the ST3 is governed by a board. Metro is under the umbrella of the King County Council. So complaints and suggestions with regard to policy can be directed to there. Immediate safety, of course, should always be routed through a 911 operator. But I, I think that the biggest thing as to pitchforks, the flaming pitchforks, I know that was facetious. But I, I, my heart was warm tonight at City Council. The, the public comment that was given, it was positive, thankful. I appreciate encouraging, inspiring, productive, um, comment from the public. And it's hard to, I know it's not flaming pitchfork, pitchforks literally, but to be encouraged to bring that emotionally into City Hall is sometimes difficult. And I, I, we definitely want to hear from the public, but I love educated, happy, encouraging. Personally, I respond best to a calm recognition of a challenge that also includes a, a plan, a reasonable plan or a willingness to get involved in creating reasonable plans. So I was very encouraged by the activity and the presentation of the community tonight, how well people from the community handled themselves and approached us. It was, it was a fabulous night to me tonight. And, uh, I just want to encourage the community to continue to, to interact that way. So thank you very much. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, the city manager just had a few comments on that last.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I, I just want to make the point, you know, that this is the last time or the worst time in our society to wantonly talk about violence. And I want to tell you that that really rings true for us because we are in the process of looking at how we can increase safeguards in City Hall, at the police department, in the court, to prevent any incidents from occurring that could harm people, including things like panic buttons, bulletproof glass, other things like that. We take that seriously. Costs the taxpayers money to be safe. So I didn't see that post, but I wholeheartedly support everything you said because what comes behind that are actions to make sure we do not suffer an incident that, um, causes damage or harms people. Thank you for those comments.
Thank you. All right, for the presiding officer's report. I, uh, I've been, uh, working on a couple of things. One, I've been meeting at the legislative level. I'm on a special, uh, committee assignment to find ways to reduce, um, theft of catalytic converters and also find, uh, relief for some of the victims. And that continues to make progress and we should have a report that goes to our, of recommendations to our legislators pretty soon. I'd also like to make, uh, thank council member up the grove from the King County Council. Several of the mayors, uh, he responded to the letter that we signed on to. And he listened to us and he heard. And we talked about funding for the court systems and the jail systems and things like that. Because of the increase in crime, there's going to be a lot of elements that need to be added to ensure our public's and our residents' safety. So I assure you that some of the good talks are in the works. I wanted to just, uh, Councilmember Steinmetz had brought up the Zenith picnic. There's one, I have one honorable duty I have to do. And that is I need to recognize Mr. Al Smith, who was one of the co-owners of Smith Brother Dairies for years, now lives in Judson Park. But we designated him as the honorary mayor of the Zenith Neighborhood. So I wanted that on public record. So, so if anybody at Judson Park or Zenith's watching, yes, I fulfilled my promise. On the 18th, uh, Lederhosen and all, we celebrated, um, Oktoberfest, which was an, we had a, a great time. It was, uh, something I could see being a tradition in the community. And I'll back up a little bit, uh, September 17th, in conjunction with the farmer's market, International Coastal Cleanup. Team of 24 divers, we went into the water, um, something I enjoy. And we pulled out, I think it was about 200 pounds. However, the biggest item this year was found by Deputy Mayor Buxton, which was the slide. So we have a bar, a high bar next year to beat. We've already talked about, um, um, of course, the Ezra Taylor event on the 26th of September and the Marina Development Meeting. I encourage, as, as, uh, Councilmember Nutting had mentioned, this is really important that the community show up there and see what's up and what's going on. Everybody wants, they always talk about having input. This is one of your opportunities. Please don't miss it. And with that, um, at this time, the, uh, council will go into executive session to discuss labor negotiations on RCW 4230 dot 140, paragraph or subsection four, subsection A. The executive session is expected to last 20 minutes. You are all more than welcome to stay. However, council will be adjourning the meeting immediately after the conclusion of the executive session and norm, no formal action will be taken. And the next regular council meeting will be October 6th of 2022. With that, I move us into executive session.